Good evening, everyone. We'll call the Tuesday, October the 8th, Public Hearing and Regular City Council to order. This time, I would like to invite any that wish to join councils, if you'd rise for our invocation, all by the budge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this gathering of people who've come together for the betterment of our city. Help us to make wise decisions, to follow the guidance of what is best for the citizens of Hartsville in every decision that we make. And also, vote for all the people who are supported by the city. Help us to be ever mindful of the people that get out and do the work each day that makes this city so great. Thank you for all the blessings you bestowed on us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This time, the Chair will entertain a motion to waive the hearing in further minutes. It's set trigger of the 10th, 2019 Regular City Council meeting. So, any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Close by name. The Ayes have. Presentations this evening. I have a presentation. I have a new friend named Frank. Frank is from Germany. He was visiting outside. Frank, stand up and be recognized. So Frank was peering in the windows, and I tricked him into coming inside. Told him he can't leave until we're finished three hours from now. So Frank, tell us what you're doing here and...
Oh, I'm...
Welcome to Hartsville, too, by the way.
Yeah, yes, I'm working for RBC bearing.
Okay, you got a bunch of people in town, then.
Yeah, I have a meeting today and tomorrow.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, some training at the Hartsville plant.
Alright, so give us your feedback. So you're staying at the...
Hampton.
At the Hampton Inn?
At the Hampton Inn, yeah.
Hampton Inn, and where have you eaten in town so far?
Oh, we've been...
Pezzels?
At the Pizza...
Yep.
At the Pizza...
Pezzels, yeah.
And we will eat with Sam Candles in thirty minutes. No.
We can come with you?
Uh, yeah, if you pay.
I mean, we didn't ask you to pay. If you were our guest, we should go with you, right? Alright, so have you been to the rooftop bar yet?
Uh, no, not yet.
I mean, so you're German, so you have a higher criteria for beer, which I very much appreciate. I should mention that Vintage has some good Weisse beer...
Okay.
That you might enjoy.
Okay.
It'll feel like home, right? So, welcome to Hartsville. Please, uh, please tell the rest of your guests that are here for RBC. We appreciate them staying here and eating downtown. And anything we can do to make your stay more accommodating. You just see one of those two ladies, and they will take care of it.
Okay.
Alright, nice to meet you, Frank. Okay, so, our proclamations. Today, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I've already signed it. Who do we have here? Oh, you have packets. You have... Yeah, everybody's got packets and ribbons for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. PD Coalition, y'all come on up. We've got something for you. I'm coming. I'm just gonna get my... I'm coming down there. You guys turn around. We're gonna present to everybody out there, if that's okay. I wouldn't get my jacket just for you ladies, so I wouldn't embarrass my mama. So, this is, uh, this is proclaiming all of the month of October in this year as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I thought maybe it'd be best if y'all would like to just take a minute and kind of talk about why this is important for you and what you'd like the city and the media that's here to know about. No, no, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Y'all do fine. Let me present this to you. So, everybody, this is for y'all. Grab that. There you go. Okay. Congratulations.
Well, my name is Charlotte Gaddy, and I'm the volunteer coordinator for Darlington County. And part of our role is community education. So, in the past year, we have been to twenty-five different events, Darlington County-wide, and, um, we have assisted seventy-seven victims of domestic violence, two-hundred-and-fifty-two children or adolescents through the Grandchildren Center, and we've housed twenty sheltered twenty women, and those are all from Darlington County. So, I feel like what we're saying is getting out there, and we're... They're using our services, and City of Hartsville always makes us feel welcome when we come out. So, thank you.
Wonderful. We're glad to have that facility. My very first introduction to it was when they were raising money in the room sponsorships, and Pat Seegers and Pat West, the two women that you want to avoid at all costs because they don't understand the word "no." When they walk in and say, "We're raising money for the Grandchildren Center," it's not, "Would you like to give?" It's, "I'm here to pick up a check." And you say, "Yes, ma'am, here's my check, thank you." But because of people like that that have been so proactive and passionate about it, you know, we've got a wonderful center that has helped a lot of people. I know that our department, Police Department, uses it regularly, and it's a blessing to have, especially for the kids. Thank you for what y'all do, and come back and see us. Or you wanted... Go ahead. You weren't gonna say anything first, and now you're right.
I was just gonna introduce myself. My name is Dolores Bess. I am the trauma counselor for PDC here in Hartsville. We... What I provide is the counseling portion. The counseling is free. So if you know anybody who has been affected by domestic violence or sexual assault, please refer them to me. I'll be more than happy to talk to them and try to help them through their process. It doesn't necessarily have to be something that has happened recently. It could be something that happened ten years, twenty years, or thirty years ago. It can still affect that person. So, if you, uh, if you would, you know, tell them about our service, and we'll be more than happy to, you know, to help them in any kind of way that we can.
So, everybody should wear purple ribbons for the month of October?
October.
Yeah? Or the... Don't y'all do the lights? Do y'all do purple lights for the house, too, or not?
Uh-uh.
No, okay.
We don't.
Alright, the purple ribbons or...
The purple ribbons or...
The twenty-fourth is...
And that one...
Wear a purple day, so you gotta remember that.
Thank you. Y'all come back. Love to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up, the Airport Advisory Board. We have the Chair, who is here. Very nice to see you.
Good seeing you here.
How are you, sir?
As always. Won't sit, but I read.
Is it gonna be that long?
Yeah, he'll be here for three hours. Mr. Mayor, councilmember. Been flying a while since you've been a member of the airport committee, and been here to discuss what's going on. So, I thought I'd take this opportunity tonight. I meant to say before, we've started really working the rush, Matt, and the airport committee has been a pleasure. Well, somebody did a great job in there, I must say. Best job you could do.
[inaudible]
It's because he's got a good brother. That's what you say to spread it on his stuff. You trained him up.
But, um, I had another member of the committee who spoke to me here. I thought I'd be busy by now. Of years, it's been a dream of airport committee to have a new airport terminal building. We've talked about it, we dreamed about it, we have sat down and prehanded little sketches and all that kind of thing. But, um, all we've done is dreamed. Last couple of years, we've really, I think, made some steps, some good steps in making this dream become reality. But I'm here tonight to explain where we are in this process. So, we've got this from Mayor Pennington, who has a vision for what the airport terminal building should look like, to make it unique. To go partially unique, he wants a unique building.
Let me qualify that. I told him, my advice would be, don't put a roundabout out of the airport, and don't put a canal anywhere near the property, and you'll be just great with that vision.
Yes, well, roundabout, we know that we'd never get the project done.
Yes.
Just keep going around and then be in it, and have it completed. But, uh, anyway, with the mayor's help and the airport consultant's help, we've consensualized a design for a building. Airport consultants have guided us through possible federal, and state, and local private funding, possible funding for this project. And, um, so, we think we believe, I just think we believe we can take this thing, get it on paper, and make it become reality. But, um, I wanted to break, make you aware of this project tonight, so that in the future, you won't be surprised when we come back and say, "Hey, we're really in the start." And you don't know anything about it. But, the design concept will need to be finalized, so that contractors can provide a realistic estimate of what the building will cost. That's one thing not yet done. An access road on the airport project will need to be constructed, of course, there's always landscaping and parking for vehicles and for aircraft around a terminal building with address built. But this is a big project from start to finish. The funding for all of this will have to come from federal CFA grants, from the state to the South Carolina Air National Commission, and then private donations. I know the city is doing it on the young workforce budget for the airport, so we think we can make this happen, based on the information we're getting from our consultants. At each step, in design, building construction, and funding development in detail, the city of course will be aware of it, because we'll be involved in that process. We're not prepared at this time to provide any specific numbers of what this thing will cost, or some realistic figures, we heard some figures that would make us stop in our tracks. So, we're not really yet to present anything here tonight. But, I just wanted to look forward to coming back in the future, and talk to you about what this project dream is happening as it develops. So, if I take any questions to that, I may be able to answer.
We had Boeing visit last week, yes. And they'll be the first to tell you that, given the proximity to the industry that we have here, that the airport is the off-ramp to the rest of the world for industry. And I truly believe that. I'll tell you that, when you have a nuclear facility that is going for relicensure, and they go into a shutdown, and time is real money and big money, the ability to fly in apart to the back door of the nuclear facility is quite a cost-saving, with every minute off the grid counts. And that's not even to say that, when you drive out there today and you see Sunoco jets parked on the tarmac, what a real opportunity for them to drive four miles to get onto their, rest of their world trips versus anywhere else, Florence, or Columbia, or Charlotte. So what an opportunity we have before us. And I think the key takeaway from what you said is, probably for the first time, we have all parties, public and private, on the same page, and the private influx of dollars only shows the value of what our project is going to be. So you've done a great job, and we can't wait to see. And thanks for the compliments on Russ. We think he's pretty special, too.
Lee, any kind of timetable for getting the designs worked on? Well, as always, we think, oh, we can get this done this year. But with the funding like it is, you get part of the, part of the funding one year, part of the next. We're thinking within the next two years. Certainly, the city's gonna be aware, because somebody's got to sign the grants, and spend that policy, city manager. But, um, hopefully, in two years, we might be back there celebrating.
Hopefully. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tell the rest of the committee, we appreciate their hard work as well.
Will do.
Okay, next, I have one on the agenda, the management update. Madam Manager.
Just a few introductions, to what I want to start about. Come on over. Hi, good morning. Thanks to the support from the city manager. I'm just a facilitator, but this is all about the Kita Career Program that Darlington County School District is working on. They set an aggressive goal, instead of waiting till next spring, to try and bring folks in in the fall. And, um... So, we were able to bring four interns, one of which is not here today, because his mentor is not here, so we'll bring him, so you guys can see him next week, but on the next meeting. But this is near and dear to my heart, because I feel like the high school I went to prepared me for the workforce, so... And then I also like Conanna, so that works out really good. But if you'll come and introduce the students that you help out with, thank you.
Yes, I have the privilege of working with so many really talented and fun young people. And so we've got Jeremy Boucher, and he goes to Lamar High School. And we've got Samantha Doherty, who is a Hartsville high school student. And we've got Nicholas Schumake, who is a Darlington high school student. And Samantha and Nicholas have, are also DCIT students, or have been DCIT students. Did you go DCIT, my friend?
I did, my friend.
You did? Okay, alright. So, um, do you want to talk a little bit about what you're, what you're doing?
Not now, I'm just working in the office part, but I hope that I did the... You're supposed to say, "You're grinding the garbage truck." Yeah.
[laughing]
And Maxine, do you have a CD out?
Sure, he does.
And Samantha said, "I really, really hope I get that police job. I really want to work for the city." So, do you want to talk a little bit about what you've been doing so far? I mean, they just started two weeks ago, so there's probably not a whole lot, but...
Um, I have been putting traffic tickets in and accident reports in for both sides. And I've been helping Ben Marley in here.
It's a file.
It's a file. Doing a bunch of filing and paperwork.
Nicholas, he's, Nicholas, they asked him in his interview, they said, "How many years have you been..." They say, "How many have you been a fireman?"
How long have I been in the back group and the service?
And he said, "Seventeen years." And they said, "Wow, how old are you?" And he said, "I'm seventeen years old." He's been, because his family, his grandfather, his uncles, his brothers, all of his family has been in the fire business. Not like pyromaniac fire, but like fire fighting business. And so, do you want to talk a little bit about what you've been doing?
I'm working in the office right now. I've been putting in pressure tests for fire hydrants, and I just got put on doing maintenance now with the trucks and stuff.
So, he said, "I just love it so much." Really appreciate the time that the city is taking with our kids. The other student is Quentin Baker, and he worked at the water park all, all summer, and he was promoted to, like, supervisor or something at the water park. But he's working with Jordan now in marketing over the winter time to help with water park marketing.
Neptune Season Three.
So, I really appreciate the city. We're gonna, we had twenty-seven students sign for internships just a couple of weeks ago, and we're going to put seventy-five out. That's Dr. Newman's goal. Yeah, that's how I feel, too. That's a lot. But, um, we're gonna try to put seventy-five students out in the spring into internships. So we really, really, really appreciate the city's support of the program and what it's doing for our young people. So, thank you.
Wonderful.
So, Samantha, do you... Rebecca, do you want to go? Yes. Can you take a picture? Well, you can take a picture. Okay.
Oh, you got a good sample.
Y'all see two cents over that, right?
So, if y'all will keep in mind, we have a hundred and fifty internships available in the summer for Neptune Island that we could fill.
And I just saw you, so we... We just approved five job fair dates.
Yeah.
I mean, we're already working on that, and Conanna has sent out an email about some job fairs that are happening at the school, so we will be there, letting them know about the job fair date. So we're already working, ramping up.
Alright, anything else, Madam Leader? Thank you all. Thank you for that. Be achieved.
You got it.
Okay.
I was trying to excuse the other chief, it's his birthday, I just don't feel like to sit here.
So, we have a longstanding tradition here in the city of Hartsville, that the Mayor Protem sings "Happy Birthday" whenever it's a Hartsville. So Chief Burr, happy birthday to you. Also, the manager just had a birthday a few days back. Mayor Protem, take it away, buddy. See me after these. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to recognize some guests, uptown guests, we have Ms. Marva.
What was she, uh?
Ms. Marva.
I'm going to catch you.
I wanted to recognize you. Your last name is Sorvino?
Sorano.
Sorano, okay. Tell us where you're from.
I'm from Hartsville. Well, I live in Norfolk, Virginia.
Okay.
And, um, we just came to the meeting, and I, we, because we're in town, we are part of that Black Seminary thing, and I'm always not here when they have a meeting, so I say, "Well, let's go see what they're doing tonight, whatever it's on." So we, uh, took the place of Ms. Verno because of her help, so I was the only committee for all of that. So we just came to kind of see what was going on.
So, they've come to see her sister, who's Ms. Margaret Verno, and she is nineteen-two?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, this last, um, last week, she's ninety-three. Ninety-three. So, they're in town very often to check on her.
Wonderful. And welcome back home. Glad to have you back.
No, I'm coming to stay, just visiting.
Well, no, there's, it's always on the table.
Yes.
We've got a deal where we've got a truck, so when you make that decision, we'll come help you with it. So glad to have you back.
Thanks for all coming.
Okay, items on the consent agenda will be received without objection. They stand approved. Moving into unfinished business, public hearing, public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three seventy-two, the manager will publish.
It's an ordinance of the city of Hartsville, South Carolina, admitting and restating Chapter fourteen, business license. Article two, business license program of the city's code ordinances to update the business license rate schedule, to make certain other modifications to city's business license procedures, and other matters related thereto.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title, the presentation of ordinance forty-three seventy-two. This time, the Chair will move to open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three seventy-two, if you'd rise, state your name and address to the record. Please leave your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the Chair will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt ordinance forty-three seventy-two.
Sir. Any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Close by name. The Ayes have. Item seven on our agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three seventy-three, the manager will publish.
Authorizing and ratifying the conveyance and transfer of certain real property and other matters related thereto.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title, the presentation of ordinance forty-three seventy-three. This time, the Chair will open the public hearing of ordinance forty-three seventy-three. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three seventy-three, please rise, state your name and address to the record. Please leave your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing on, the Chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt ordinance forty-three seventy-three.
Second. Uh, there's a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Madam.
Would that piece of property, this is the piece of property that was going to be the doll park at one time?
No, no, this is out parcel by that hotel.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So would it become part of the hotel?
Uh, no, it'd be up...
And it's going to the development?
Development, but maybe not, doubtful that it would go to the hotel.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going into their control, no.
So you don't have any plans right now, this moment?
Um, we've got plans. We haven't been able to execute anything at the moment.
So we just transfer it into the development?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Close by name. The Ayes have. We've been talking to a CFA Incorporated. I don't know what the CFA stands for, I can only imagine it'd be some other chicken franchise.
Where you are?
Yeah, it's like some kind of chicken sandwich, chicken fillet, chicken, chick fillet, something like that, I don't know what it's... It was just initials, could be a...
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's all I've asked for for Christmas. Please, please bring me.
We can't do that.
Okay. Alright, so, item eight on the agenda under unfinished business, it's public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three seventy-four, the manager will publish.
It's an ordinance of the city of Hartsville, South Carolina, admitting and restating Chapter two, administration, Article two, council dividend one, generally, section two dash thirty-eight, duties of the mayor and mayor for attending the city's code ordinances to make certain amendments and other matters related thereto.
Okay, you've heard about the reef, I just got tickled. I was thinking that county council codenames all of their economic development projects. I've been trying to codename ours Chick-fil-A, but Natalie won't let me, because she thinks it'll cause mass hysteria in town. Okay, I'm back. You've heard the reading by, by title of ordinance forty-three seventy-four. This time, the Chair will move to open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three seventy-four, you rise, state your name and address to the record. Please leave your comments in two minutes or less. And hearing that there are none, the Chair will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt ordinance forty-three seventy-four.
Second. There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signify by saying aye. Close by name. The Ayes have. Item nine on the agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three seventy-five.
It's an ordinance to lease the property of four oh seven Mill Avenue to a municipal police officer as required in the city's CBG badge for the O'Dell Village, where it belongs.
You've heard the reading by title, the presentation of ordinance forty-three seventy-five. This time, the Chair will move to open the public hearing of ordinance forty-three seventy-five. If you'd like to be heard on the ordinance, you rise, state your name and address to the record. Please leave your comments in two minutes or less. And seeing that there are none, the Chair will open the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt ordinance forty-three seventy-five.
Sir. There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Madam.
Mr. Mayor, was there any provision in there for rental assistance in that grant?
There is not, because the law precludes us from doing that, I believe. Or that was maybe water assistance.
For this, we actually give it to them for a less amount than the market rate for in-kind donation for patrolling the neighborhood more.
We can't, we couldn't do in-kind for the water, is what it was, wasn't it?
We can't do in-kind for water.
Right, yeah.
So, in-kind means no charge?
No, 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 it's less than the market rate.
Less than market, okay.
They pay less than market rate for being there, having a presence in the neighborhood. But they still do pay a minimal amount, a minimal amount for it.
Yeah. Okay, if there's nothing further, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by name. The Ayes have. Moving into... That?
So the need for a piece of property, and he started above the desk to do that.
Absolutely. Moving into new business, actually, we did, didn't we have it one time, or it fell through?
We tried multiple times. We have, we had a contract on a house at one point, but we couldn't find an officer that would take it.
That was on, on Rice Street.
We tried one on Rice, and we actually tried a partnership with Habitat at one point. They were gonna allow an officer to go there, and still could not find an officer.
They had one at, um, South Park at one time.
Yeah, that's where Zeus was for a while, yeah. Maybe that's a good start back. Item 10 on our agenda under new business is pressuring of ordinance 4376. The manager will publish.
It's an ordinance of the city of Harpsville, South Carolina, admitting and restating Chapter 15 offenses and miscellaneous provisions. Article 6 Minor Division 2 curfew of the city's code of ordinances and other matters related thereto.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title of the presentation of ordinance 4376. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt ordinance 4376.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Madam?
Mr. Mayor, did we raise the age from 16 to 18?
I believe this is in accordance with the new state statute.
Yes.
All right.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. All right. On page two, section 58-193, where it states that a minor can be on the sidewalk of the place where he resides or on the sidewalk of a place where the minor has permission from his parents to be, that needs to be correct because if the parent permits him to be in a place they shouldn't be, then they're going to say, "Well, you said I can let him be where they want to be, where I permitted them to be."
What section is that?
That is 58-193.
Okay, 194.
Number five. Number five.
So it says, "On the sidewalk where the minor resides or on the sidewalk of a place where the minor has permission..."
From his parents to be. But if the parent permits the child to be in a...
Pool hall that...
Well, unauthorized, well, a place that child shouldn't be.
Right.
It says of a next-door neighbor, it's unlikely the pool hall is...
No, no, no. Children, children will go wherever they pretty much choose to go. And that's going to be a root hole. If the parent permits him to be in a place on the sidewalk, I see that as a root hole.
We can run this by our local council for the next meeting. That's two proposals for us, just to make sure we're in compliance with state law and top or any type of...
So, yeah, so first reading, let's go ahead and pass it through the senate for revision. How about that?
Yes.
Okay.
There was one other section.
Okay.
58-194, Article number one. If you mail this letter to the parent and the minor, minors intercept mail. If it has the minor's name on that address, then that may give the minor the ability to trash it if he wants. So if we have the parent's name and then the minor's name inside the envelope that can't be seen on that...
Should we do registered mail to the parent? I tell you what.
You can.
And certainly glad you weren't on city council when I got my forecards sent to my house. Because, boy, that intercepting those saved me a couple of times.
I know.
Which section was that in?
That was section 58, 194, item number one.
A1.
A1, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So the councilwoman would like that addressed as well. And the mayor Protem also recommended that it be sent registered mail or certified, whatever it is. Certified, you know, certified mail to make sure...
To the parent.
To the parent. Right. So we'll make those adjustments after they've gone through review with county, legal council?
Because it says to the minor and his or her parent.
Okay. So if there are no, no further discussion, we're going to pass it as written for first reading and then pass it up to legal council. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Item 11 on the agenda is Resolution 10-19-01, a resolution for approval to apply for South Carolina Aeronautics Commission grant. Is there such a motion?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. Item 12 on the agenda is a motion to enter executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-70, Paragraph 8, Subparagraph 1 and 2, for the discussion of appointments to various courts, commissions, and committees and the city manager's contract. Is there such a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
I want to recognize Mr. Kansas' name there. Oh, weird dress there.
I did not even, that was just placed as...
Staff is addressing that right now, but is wanting to table for council this evening?
Well, I just wanted to make sure it's being addressed as we are just saying aye to them and pointing out that it is property that is, that the city demolished.
Shannon, I think you've spoken with him.
Let's, um...
Instead of meeting up with him, we'll get that councilman back.
Yeah, so for the sake, for the sake of protocol, Madam Manager, if you could get clarification from staff on where we stand to address those concerns, make sure that it's...
We have that, yeah.
And you, if it would please the council, we could get them, if you would just email councilwoman that and then copy, so we'll all be able to... All right. Ten-four. Okay? Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. Stand in executive session. Thank you all to our...